Okay, it says we're live. I'm just gonna do a quick check here to make sure. So I had an issue once. Yep, there we are. Okay, we are live. Okay, so welcome back everyone. We're still gathering folks here. I just thought we'd get the stream going. And before I forget, let me get the chat up here. And share my screen. About this chat for YouTube. That over here. Okay, gallery view up here. Alright, so like I said, well hopefully we'll have one or two more folks joining, but we're gonna go ahead and get started here and Ben, are you able to help me with notes today?
Yep.
I'll let you fill in the names then. I don't have anyone to introduce today from the look of it as I see it. Oh, that's Andrew. Got a black screen for some reason, Andrew. Now I see your name. There we go. Um, action items. We'll start there. Alexander and or Maz, neither of them are here. We're hoping to get an update from them about this Finnish medical event that they attended. So we'll come back to that. Uh, I was tasked with setting up a spreadsheet to document all of these different champion needs and tasks or projects that we've been collecting. And I've done that. I did not send the link to Ben, but I'm gonna go ahead and put it right here in our notes. Let me change the sharing permissions. Like. And give that to you here, Ben. So I just, I just put in the, the same list that we have in our notes, which we are going to be looking at in a short while and talking about. And I just, I tried to estimate the scale of effort, whether it's small, medium, or large with kind of a definite end, or if it's something that's ongoing, as you can see, most of these are ongoing needs. Which is challenging, you know, it's harder to find somebody that's, that's going to be able to stick with something longer term, but that's the discussion we'll be having. So we'll come back to that. As I said, I've got the whole list below. I've not gone live with the device catalog pages. We've talked about that. I'm hoping that we might be able to use this sort of task bounty approach maybe to find somebody to help with this. I'm gonna keep it on here for now, but being realistic, I'm gonna need help with that. Bob, write up a Lumia discussion thread, including a proposed payment for the matching platform analysis fellowship, six months to a year. So I know you did write up a job description. And I think that's on me to kind of finish reviewing and editing, right? Is, is that where we're at?
Yep, yep.
My apologies. Let me, let me update this. View edit Bob's job description for matching. And then once that's done, we'll write up a discussion thread and get that going. But Bob did write up a very nice one-page description and I just need to go in and spend some time with that. Did you have a chance to give me edit access on that? Cause when I clicked the link, okay, for some reason it's still telling me I have view access.
Really? Oh, okay. Well, let me, let me go and make sure after this call that you have edit access.
You know, just.
I may have given you just view. I can't remember.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I, I'll, I'll let you look at that afterwards. But yeah, I clicked on it this morning. I clicked on your sharing link and it still said I was a viewer. Maybe it was a matter of me changing it. Um, okay, so let's see then, uh, helped us, oh, the Flashforge email exchanges. Have there been any further contact with them? Oh, Ben, you were gonna talk to Kyle. That's where we left this. Any, has there been any contact with him?
We've been playing tag. Yeah, I find a time. He's working a nine-to-five job, so I'm hoping that, you know, one of these weekends is, is gonna work because he's right around the corner from John, so it'd be easy enough to catch up. But I know that John's got a deadline this weekend, so it's probably not gonna be for another week or so.
Sounds good. Okay, so we'll just leave that on here. John and Ben, we're can follow up with schools about internships. Any updates there?
Um, let's see, we, we did meet this weekend and talked a bit about internship opportunities, but you know, I, I think it's it's sort of still at an impasse. We had some ideas. Actually, no, there is an update. John reached out to Eric Boobar about some next steps, larger steps within sort of the enable, at least US initiatives. And it seems like he could be a really key player in that. Merrymount is one of the universities connected to handshake, but more importantly, they've got that new program that they're, they're piloting this year. Not even piloting, it seems like it's really quite a thing. So that could be a really interesting avenue to put some focus into for internships.
Very good. All right, I don't have any kind of special presentations on the roster or schedule. I would love to add some, but um, nothing on the, on the, on the schedule for now. These are the metrics. Nothing really jumped out at me when I did these. It looked like a pretty typical week. If anything, it was a little lower activity than usual, just in terms of the number of number of posts, number of likes, only one badge request, just kind of a slow week, but nothing too out of the ordinary. Uh, from the hub, picked up a couple of posts of interest. Rick Williams posted about, uh, he's working with a veterinary surgeon to come up with a prosthetic foot for a dog and that had some interest. So they're gonna be doing some 3D scans and uh, there was some discussion about this, but um, I don't know, looked uh, like something that might be of interest. The links there. Bob posted about a request for a device from someone in Iraq and tagged Ahmad. And there's a comment from Peter Smith. Oh, I think he's a newer volunteer. That's more of a general comment. Anyway, um, looks like we have a need and just point that out if, if anyone happens to be in that area. And then Ben put out our call for 10-year anniversary videos. We talked about this last time of maybe just trying to collect video clips from people throughout the community, chapters, individuals, tell us about your experiences, share a project, talk about, you know, how it's impacted you, maybe get one of your device users on camera, anything like that. And we can put together a really nice sort of celebratory highlight reel for our 10-year anniversary. So that's uh,
Yeah, I just want to point out that there are vast numbers of videos already on YouTube and in social media.
That's true. That could be another good intern project to help gather and collate and do video editing and you don't have to be a long time enabler to do that. You just need to have some video editing experience. That can be a good one.
And by the way, it doesn't have to be comprehensive. We're not talking about collecting all of them, collecting, collecting enough wonderful ones um, for our purposes. And there are a lot of wonderful ones uh, to be, to be had.
True. So, um, okay, upcoming meetings, we've got the focus follow-up or do we today, Ben? There's a little question about that.
Yeah, it's a question mark. I, I followed up with Alexander and I wasn't sure if he wanted to, um, yeah, it wasn't quite joint today, or if he had a recording. So well, I mean, it's, it's in two hours, so I'm.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna have to say that today's focus follow-up is tentative. Uh, you know, if, if there is one, obviously there will be a recording for everyone to enjoy.
Yeah, and his work is already, um, he did share basically what we're hoping to cover earlier, so.
This is about the print-in-place Phoenix design with parametric scaling capabilities. So, yeah.
Yeah, pretty exciting stuff. So, oh, you first.
I was just gonna say, if not today, we'll, we'll certainly get more details on that. I know he's working on a video and documentation, so there will be more infos coming soon on that.
Right, so that could be something that we continue just as a video that we share later. It could be an asynchronous thing to, to get some feedback from him, so.
Sure. So then, um, I guess that would be the last event of the month, so there's nothing else to go through here. Anything that you want to share about the upcoming events for April, Ben?
Sure, we'll be starting out with a Bionics meeting, looking at the the Moto Gripper. Um, there's some, some work that Skip and John have been looking into, um, kind of having a summary of of how that project came together. Skip's been looking at um other chapters that have been doing some work on that and reached out to some folks in Thailand and uh, different places, so. That'll be a pretty exciting session, I think, because it's gonna be looking at more of the, the low-tech in the value of that, rather than, you know, Bionics sometimes can be the, you know, the high-tech sort of exclusive stuff. So, um, we also have Jeff Powell, who's gonna join us for the education meeting. And um, I'm still going back and forth with Pope Paraguay, but they've been doing some uh, recent lower limb advances and they wanted to, to share some of that work with Enable, so.
Nice. Okay.
And then I guess, uh, John uh, was thinking about for the chapter spotlight, um, having a focus on current events in Europe and having the, the European chapters come together and sort of brainstorm, um, how they're preparing for, um, the moment that we're in.
Great. And that one is when, second Monday? Uh, where would that put us? I'm just curious what that date is.
Um, the second Monday is the 11th.
Okay, it's April 11th for that chapter discussion.
Yep. Great. I'll be getting out the April lists soon.
Okay. Thank you for doing all that each month, Ben.
Sure.
Uh, don't have any one-time events on the schedule right now, but if, uh, you know, there, I, there's, these always pop up and they don't have to be enable events like that one from the Finnish medical event was a great example. If anybody comes across things like that, that might be of interest or relevance, be sure to uh, either, you know, drop them in here or shoot me an email, anything and I'll, I'll add them, but let's, let's get those in here. I don't always, I'm not always aware of them. Okay, so on we go to our discussion topics and I, I inserted a new one here that I think, uh, we, we should talk about first because it's going to sort of color these other discussions and that is just, I think it's time to have a discussion about some sort of changes that have been happening around here in the, in the US region and how we move forward. We have several of our key members here on the US team that are either going to be retiring in the near future or significantly reducing their involvement. Among those are, are Bob, who's going to be retiring in the not-too-distant future from uh, some of the roles that he's been handling as far as, um, the help desk, uh, the badging process and case facilitation.
And chapter administration.
Chapter administration. Thank you, Bob. Uh, John and myself are both of, are tied up in other activities that are taking more of our time, so we're certainly not, you know, withdrawing or retiring from Enable, but both of us are in a position where we have far less time available outside of meetings, certainly. Uh, compared to what we used to, and that's, we've been seeing that that's starting to impact us and, and create challenges. And we've got several other key volunteers that are just, you know, there are big things going on in their lives and they're, they're finding themselves less able to invest the kinds of time and energies that they had been. And so I think it's just time for discussion about where we're at. I think this is more relevant to sort of the US operations of Enable, I guess we would say, or the English-speaking part of the community. Um, and I say that because we have so many other regions that have taken a different approach, where they have established very strong chapters with strong leadership and they it, it's almost like they're run more like traditional organizations, you know, within the context of their region. Here in the US, we kind of took that alternate approach of sticking to the kind of the non-organization thing of saying, yeah, it's just, it's all volunteers, nobody's in charge, there's no central leadership. And that certainly has some, uh, some attractive elements to it, but it also has some challenges, right? Because we've, we've made ourselves reliant upon specific individuals and individuals and their availability changes over time. And so, um, I don't know, maybe it's time to talk about just sort of how we're doing things. Are there lessons that can be learned? In light of these developments from some of our other chapters and how they're doing things. And I just kind of like to open this up for discussion. We will have to talk about these specific roles and some of the things that we're specifically going to need to find people to start helping us with. But I thought maybe it would make sense first to just kind of have a broader discussion about just kind of where we're at. You know, uh, you know, do we want to be thinking about how we are providing support to our community? And um, just want to kind of open that up for discussion. Any thoughts?
Uh, well, I can. John, you have that. No, I was just gonna say I can share my experience of four years.
That would be very helpful.
And I am literally today shipping to a recipient my 31st actual device in four years. And as you know, I've been involved at a number of levels. But here's, here's my conclusion. I think Enable is a wonderful organization. But I think we are most effective. And therefore there are areas of least effectiveness, uh, or lesser effectiveness. We are most effective when we have a physical presence. So, you know, the larger organizations like Brazil, like France, like organizations in South America, I think are extremely effective in meeting the needs of the recipients. From my own experience being an individual volunteer and basically never physically meeting any of my recipients and operating only by, you know, the measurement process, making a device as best I can, shipping it, and then trying to interact. And at best, it's one or two FaceTime calls to check fit and to show things. I don't think I, I have been very effective as an individual volunteer because I don't know how, how you can be operating at a distance. Uh, I've tried to follow up with some of my recipients. I get no responses. So, uh, I have received response that so-and-so liked their device for a couple of days. They played with it. It was a toy in the case of children. They showed it off at school. It was cool. Uh, but you know, I, I guess what I've learned is that people with limb differences get along just fine in a lot of cases. And the device is a novelty. It's fun, um, but as a long-term daily tool, it, it doesn't exist unless perhaps you know, in the organizations like Brazil and France, when somebody needs it for work and they can be seen physically and followed up with physically, then I think it's most effective. So my bottom line is, I'm not sure Enable is all that effective for individual internet operators like myself.
And so. You, you raised several really good dimensions here and uh, it might be worth developing a collection of relevant factors, but you've talked about the remote service uh, model. And I think you're right about the challenges of the remote service model. And you've talked about, uh, the uh, the, the age factor. With young kids, I think it is often, certainly in this country, very much a toy and a novelty. Um, and by the way, I I have the impression from some parents that simply giving the kid the ability to choose whether to have a mechanical hand or not, in fact, sort of de-stigmatizes their condition. And that's a, that's a lasting psychological effect, even though the device may simply be a transitional prop.
Very true, very true. Um, and therefore it does add value in that sense.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
But it may not be what you think it's doing.
All right, but I wanna, I wanna, so I wanna dig in another aspect to this because Bob, Bob is zeroing in on kind of the delivery side of things and we'll come back to the, the bigger picture operational side of things uh, a little later, but for now, let's stay with this. So I hear what you're saying, that it's definitely beneficial to have a direct physical access, to be able to work directly with recipients. But you suggest that as an individual not affiliated with a chapter, it sounds like you're saying your only option is to kind of do things remotely through the internet. Did you ever explore, um, finding people more locally that you could have physical access to? Did you find that was not a possibility? Or what was your experience with that, with that?
It, it, it's good question, Jeremy. Limited experience. You know, I think a lot depends on how long you've been in a community, what activities you're involved with. I can say that here in Westerly, Rhode Island, I am pretty plugged into a number of volunteer organizations, including my church. Uh, and there is nobody that knows of anyone with a limb difference I have asked. Now, that doesn't mean they don't exist.
Of course.
But you know, it's not like they're, they're knocking on your door either. So, um, you know, I ran a hot dog sale once, remember that?
That's right.
Funery, little funery. And so I, you know, I've tried a few things. And I can, and I've, I've certainly spoken to civic organizations, church organizations here. Nobody ever popped up as a recipient locally.
Okay. Ben?
One of the things that seems like it comes up when we have these discussions is that there is, um, there's sort of these extremes of, um, you know, groups of makers that are looking for ways to help and there's nobody that they can find. You know, in, in their region. Um, then there's also areas like the Dominican Republic and parts of India where it seems like, um, there's very little, um, access to the technology to make, um, devices or sometimes the knowledge, um, and, and the connections between this or hospital services and that stuff. That's all sort of these emerging trends that are coming up. Um, and there's, there's a lot. I mean, um, Dominican Republic, there's a thousand people on the waiting list. One of the things that, that also flips this upside down is looking at lower limbs internationally. So where that's a big obstacle in the US because of liability and because of, you know, our FDA regulations. Other places, um, that's really the there's not a, a secondary option. There are no affordable devices. So there's all these new open source, uh, lower limb devices. I think 70% of the, the people in the Dominican Republic of those a thousand, um, are lower limb. And that's the difference between getting around in crutches and, and having a device um, that allows you, that kind of mobility is huge. That's not, um, the same kind of um, relationship that an upper limb device has to, you know, being able to, um, navigate. Although, you know, had, being able to cut your food and that kind of stuff, also pick up a cup. That's all very important, but I, I do wonder if the, there's this separation. There's areas of extreme need and then there's areas where, um, there's, there's little to no need to be found after re, lots of research. And our model has been at times to deliver things to, to a spot, um, that doesn't have the infrastructure to sort of continue that process and do the follow-up and that kind of stuff, or something like what Dean Rock and his team has done, which is this long-term investment, going over, spending time supporting local actors to build a national presence. Um, connecting the dots between universities and, and rotaries and but it's a much longer cultivation process. It's not something that you can, um, you know, whip out in a weekend. And, and I do feel like the learning curve that, that I've found myself going through is really appreciating that process and recognizing the, some of the limitations that Bob's mentioning. I'll pass it to John.
So there's the so there are regional geographic differences and there are regional bodily differences and they interact, as you point out. Uh, lacking a lower limb is a very big deal, I think, anywhere you are. Lacking a hand or some fingers is actually, I think, quite troubling to people in certain cultures. And I think in, in America, it isn't. You can get, I mean, there's no question that functionally you can get by quite fine. But in, uh, certain parts of the world, there is a stigma. Um, both internal and external, the way you feel and the way people treat you, uh, which is a concern. I know that when I was, uh, in Honduras, there was a memorable day when I met two of Enable Honduras's recipients. And to my surprise, they both wore their device every day. They told me, I believe them. I really do believe. Um, I believe them in part because one of them was a metal worker who actually had re-engineered a metal version of the very same enable arm that he had. So he put a lot of time into it and he was very proud of it. And he told me that he wore it every day. And he said he wore it every day to go to the bar with his buddies and just feel part of the gang and to be able to do fist bumps. Right? So there are, there are big cultural differences. And I think but two, two points there. So at this point, I think I've enumerated five factors, right? There's geography, there's age, there's psychological significance, et cetera, et cetera. There are more factors still. If there were only two factors, you could actually put dots on a two-dimensional graph and you would find certain sweet spots. But it's a multi-dimensional matrix and there are places where everything aligns and you've got you know, an enabled chapter or an individual who's making a big difference for people who really want it. That might be, for example, Dean Rock in Dominican Republic. Um, or enable Turkey, or some of these other cases. And there are other places where they don't line up quite right and it's still a good learning experience, et cetera, but it's not sort of realizing the full vision. Last week, I had the opportunity to review a quite comprehensive study that Safe Savage, um, is submitting for publication. Which looks at four countries and deals with uh, at least dozens of cases. Um, and is the most comprehensive study of enable around cultures that I have seen. I don't think it's quite ready for publication yet, but it's an impressive study. And it has a number of these observations about where things break down. So you know, I think that's the kind of situation we have. And I think Bob, who by the way, has done huge service to the network. Um, in addition to the work he's done with, uh, with his 31 direct recipients. Um, is a good example of someone who fell as an, as a, as a maker and a device maker fell into a non-sweet spot. That's, I, I think that's very much the nature of the case with Enable.
Yeah.
But you know, we could. Yes, go ahead, Bob.
No, no, please. I, I want to respond to that, but go.
Well, you should respond because I was gonna go up a level, so.
Oh, uh, just two, two quick comments. In no way, shape, or form do I consider my involvement to have been a failure or anything. Uh, I'm just saying what I've observed. To address Ben's lower limb. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we would encounter what I would term mission creep a little bit. Because I don't think you can directly 3D print lower limbs. I think you suddenly get into a whole realm of other technologies, skills and crafts. Um, including metalworking and things like that, even in poor countries. Um, so you know, I would say, and I do believe that low, there are probably more lower limb needs because of landmines and things like that in places of the world than, than perhaps hands. But I'm not sure we, we can say it's 3D printing anymore. It would, it would probably be expanded capability, which the average person may not have.
It's, it's less, uh, I mean, this is secondary. Um, I was really surprised to see how most of it is 3D printed and they can just use a, a pipe. But at the same point, you're right that there's this, this expanded scope that's been a part of, I think, the last couple of years. The, the pandemic really was a, um, a shift, you know, big tectonic plate, um, making its movements and, uh, you know, I, I do feel like after some of those initial waves, there was a shift back to, um, 3D printed prosthetic upper limb devices, but, um, you know, I have noticed in, in recent meetings that a lot of the, the people that are involved are involved in um, things that used to be outside of the scope of Enable that suddenly feel like it's, it's all, um, a sort of a similar, slightly larger umbrella. Um, but yeah, what is the defined, what defines, you know, that larger umbrella is sort of an organic moving target.
And there are chapters that are doing significant work with lower limbs these days.
Yeah, but that, I mean, the, the, I, we don't want to get too far into this because that's, I think, a different topic. Lower limbs, I think, has some different implications here in the US because the FDA has been pretty clear that they would not be looking the other way if we started doing lower limb devices. So, um, I, I, I think there's some different concerns based on the region with that and the oversight that's involved. I see Andrew has his hand up and then John wanted to go up a level from what he was saying before. So Andrew, let's go to you first.
Oh, a quick recap of my like whole enable experience. During the pandemic, we were 3D printing PPE.
During the pandemic, we were 3D printing PPE. We had three printers going at one point. It was a really good experience. Really enjoyed the ability to apply those skills like a humanitarian cause. And then the demand for the 3D printed PPE dried up. We had lots of stacks of stuff laid around. Nobody was claiming it after Facebook posts and stuff. So I was looking for like a new opportunity to be able to shift that, that skill set and our, our 3D printing hardware into some other kind of humanitarian project. I remember seeing a, a cool YouTube video about some guy making a open source 3D printed bionic hand. I was like, oh, maybe there's communities out there that I could find that are doing similar kind of projects. Googled for a while, found enable and found the closest chapter to me, which is Badger Hands in Madison. I offered my skills and my printers to them and the response I got was thank you so much, but we have no need for that right now. We, there's just not, there's no recipients. Nobody needs these devices at the moment. It's pretty rare that a request would come through. So I kind of looked around for stuff to do. I got connected with Ward and we started working on, on the Phoenix remodel and on shape. And that led to me being on the collaborative design team where I learned about the Evo and we got working on the software. But my, my experience was essentially, I came in because I knew that you guys are 3D printing devices and I wanted to help. And I found that's just not really what my local community needs. And there's not much I can do around here. But I do have a lot of like knowledge work skills that I can contribute. And so I could participate in more of like an R and D capacity. And I think that's going to be the case in a lot of the United States. I think there's going to be a lot of folks who have, who have like the, the knowledge work skills and the energy and the will to be able to contribute to kind of research and development projects, designing and prototyping new devices, software, stuff like that. We just don't have that much local need for 3D printing as far as I'm aware. So I think one of the really cool ways that we could leverage the unique strengths of the place that we come from. The space I come from is to have a particular focus on research and development and really expanding our catalog of devices. Because these, these generalist devices like the Evo we've got coming up are awesome, especially now that we can get the parametric, they're going to function and fit better. But there's just a lot of people whose needs can't really be filled by a device that's not as, not as precise or strong as, as as someone's hand would be otherwise. But there's lots of interesting situations where someone has a unique need that we could meet if we had some R and D design muscle applied to it, like coming up with specific devices for specific cases and stuff. And I think a, a cool way that we could increase the amount of, of utility that we can get as an organization will be to focus our efforts on increasing the pool of these, of these more specific devices, like how, how it was mentioned that somebody had specifically modified their hand for the kind of work they're doing. That's awesome. And that's, that's the kind of work that we could do anywhere and can share globally. So if there are specific jobs where people need a prosthetic to be able to perform that, we could invest a pretty significant amount of R and D muscle to come up with a prototype of a device and then just share it with the broader community, especially now that we've got some platforms and software in the works that would make it easier for us to widely distribute those models and make them accessible to everybody.
That is a really helpful perspective. Thank you, Andrew.
No problem.
But that, I think, brings us to the question of and who and how are we going to organize such efforts? I think Andrew's point is a good one. Ben points out that half of the American chapters are university chapters. And so the notion of really organizing an R and D network is a really powerful idea. Frankly, that's one of the things we want to talk to Eric Buber about because he's actually gone from a, a local enable volunteer to a productive chapter. He changed his career at Merrimount and now there's a whole program in biomedical engineering. But whether he or they are in a position to model or orchestrate a whole university network brings us to the higher level discussion about leadership and organization, I think.
Well, so Andrew raises a really good point about, you know, at least here in the US, maybe the focus isn't about making devices for people. Maybe the focus is on other ways that we can help the community. Now, he focused on R and D and design, which I think is a wonderful way that we can contribute. Another way perhaps is we have a lot of online infrastructure that is designed not just to support the US, but our entire global community to whatever extent possible. There's a lot of work to be done there. And so another one of the roles that we have already in our sort of list of champion needs is a sort of a web development lead role. And so we're talking about two kind of lead roles here, a, a lead kind of developer role, somebody to oversee all development efforts and somebody to oversee R and D and design efforts. And those could be two really key areas of contribution coming out of, you know, this area of the world to support the broader community. That, that's not just about 3D printing stuff that, that isn't really a need here. So I, I really like that approach as, as a way of dealing with our kind of unique situation here. I don't know. What do you think, Ben?
I think it's a really great point. One of the, the ways that we can move forward, I think, through this, this transition point is to think about specific roles. And, and it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, enable as a whole does this or the US, you know, needs to sort of shift in one way or the other, but just recognizing what we already have going, you know, what's, what's developing that could use sort of some cultivation or a gardener. We do have.
I was just going to say, Ben, that that might be a good lead-in to our, the list of kind of champion needs that we've collected, which I have expanded to include the things that, you know, Bob is, is retiring from. And so we have kind of a longer list here, but we can kind of go through this if that would be helpful.
Great.
All right. So let's just run through it first, just kind of see if, if this helps provide some context, then we can talk about a couple of the key ones. So there were two, the two leadership roles that I mentioned, there's a web development, software development leader and coordinator. And then there's the R and D department tech leader coordinator. So those are the two that we were just talking about. And a lot of these others might be in support or, you know, overseen by those and some of them will be separate. We've got a needs analysis and plan development for the matching platform. I'm thinking that would be overseen by the web development lead. We need somebody to revise our web presence to update our websites, bring together this new matching platform. If that's what we choose to use, the Enabling the Future site, the hub, just make things more, you know, streamlined to give a more unified experience for the people coming to us and trying to find their way. That again, would be overseen by our developer lead. We need somebody to help us with event planning, although it looks like we might be going in a direction of just trying to put together a video compilation. So maybe that's, I should just say, and/or video editing. I guess I'll just say video editor for a 10-year anniversary video. So that would be a, a specific project with a start and end. Someone to develop international partnerships and collaborations. We've talked about an outreach coordinator for just getting the word out, letting people know what we can offer to try to find more people who are in need of devices that don't know about us. Organizers for our recurring meetings. So somebody to do, you know, somebody to just kind of keep these meeting agendas running. Make sure that we have guest speakers for these meetings, somebody to help with, you know, getting the recordings out there, the notes, all that stuff that mostly Ben is taking care of. But looking for other people to help take the lead on some of those. We have an editor for YouTube video captions. Oh, and by the way, I meant to try this out today, guys, that Zoom actually has built-in live annotations now. So you can actually, or I didn't mean annotations, transcriptions. So, and it's, it's funny now, they just did an update this morning and now they put it under the more menu. So now it's under more of the three dots. You can say live transcript and I'll just say enable. And so now what you're, you're going to, you should have, and how do you get to that? I think under the more of viewful transcript. Now, I don't think you guys are seeing my window, but you should in your Zoom toolbar. You should be able to see, if you go into the more button, you should be able to say view transcript. And you'll see, not only is it transcribing what we're saying, but the benefit of this over Zoom is it's actually showing who's saying it. Because it knows who's talking. So you actually get a transcript with people's names and what they're saying, which I think is really nice. Now, the question is, does this actually flow through to YouTube? I don't think it does, but that's why I wanted to test this here. Maybe this is what we use, you know, live in our Zoom meetings and then, you know, let Zoom do its captioning later, but we can.
Well, you know, the funny thing. So I got a button that says captioning has been enabled and the caption may be saved and shared with the apps and others by participants. So in principle, you could add the, this transcript to the YouTube transcript.
That's what I was going to say. So we do.
We digress.
If you go into the full transcript button, there's a button that says save transcript and we can save that. So yeah, enough on that. But it is a cool new feature just in, in light of our striving towards internationalization. So just wanted to point that out. I'll leave it running. So that was the, we were looking at editor for YouTube video captions. That was why I mentioned that. Maybe this would help us. Maybe it's a matter of copying and pasting this into, to use as a starting point for YouTube captions. Don't know, but that's another tool we have. Manage the enable help desk and respond to incoming inquiries. Monitor incoming badge requests, review evidence and award badges. Of course, the one that I forgot here is review new chapter submissions and approve new chapters. Monitor EWC cases or alternate matching platform and help with any issues. That's the case facilitation role. And we had extra. That's a double. Okay. So those are the, the kind of the roles that we've captured recently. I see that Ben's doing some revisions here. So putting things.
That's me.
Oh, John. Okay. So under the topic of service coordinator, he's grouping some things. Okay.
Anyway, I, I have a feeling that all of these can fit under these four categories. But we'll find out as I.
Well, yeah, it's a good idea to do some organizing and, and it'll also help us to see, like I said, we've got a couple of key like lead roles and it's going to be helpful to look at which of these are going to be overseen by which other roles and that sort of thing. You'll start to see how these relate to one another. So that's worth doing. But leads us with the question of who? We are going to need help from people to take on some of these.
Right. You know, one of the, the things that pops up, you know, we've been talking about interns and getting universities to be involved in the, sort of the R and D process that Andrew emphasized and it really does seem like we are suited for, but I think with universities, in some ways you get this dedicated focus and initiative and momentum and, and, you know, fresh eyes, but you, it's, it's a pretty fast turnaround. So you, you get somebody to work on a project and then they're out the door. So some things that's ideal for, you know, like an event, some things it's a challenge for, like incoming requests or, you know, if you have three months in between responding to messages, you're going to feel it. So that, that is something to think about is, you know, maybe we can sort of separate some of this stuff into what could be these, these sprints and what really needs to be more of a regular moderation in, in the capacity that, that Bob has been contributing.
You know, I think though there are, there are two elephants in the room, which I don't want to neglect. One is that if, as we have found, that unless we increase our flow of recipients who really want these devices, the big investment in a matching platform is, is inappropriate. So there's that, right? I mean, we have seen that in the US, everyone is complaining that there aren't enough recipients. So why are we really here? We've got some interesting ideas for why they might really be here.
But, but I, I do want to, I just want to jump in quickly on that, John, because I want to point out that number one, there's not necessarily a big investment. I mean, we need to look at it and figure out which way we want to go. But if we want to adopt, say, the, the platform that was shared with us by our friends in France, there might not be a lot of effort in spinning that up. And I also just want to point out that that matching platform is by no means just to serve the US. My hope is that it would be more useful in serving the broader community and it just happens to be hosted here and maybe maintained here.
Well, that brings me to the other point I wanted to make, and that's the higher level thing. This has been an interesting discussion about what should be this, the focus of what I will now call, even though we've never actually declared the existence of Enable US, where I think we have a particular set of capabilities and limitations, which we've been discussing up until now. Enable US is part of a much larger network and for reasons of history, Jeremy and I at least have sort of adopted the mantle of co-founders of Enable International. And yet we're not, right? We, we, this global network has got its own multiple directions of momentum. And I think, given that Jeremy and John want to stay involved with Enable, but are going to be less involved than we have been. It's a really good moment to think about how Enable US relates to the larger Enable movement and how the larger Enable movement wants to respond to the notion that the original co-founders are no longer going to be at these placeholders for global coordinators. I, I said that as if the answer is clear and it's, it's not even that clear. And I will say that I think that the series of meetings that Ben has put together, in particular for chapter leaders and on themes, is a really interesting and still developing model for an international service that plays a really valuable role. Someone, I think, really ought to continue the process of bringing chapters from around the world into contact with each other. And whether that's another one of our particular specialties or whether that's something that needs to be taken on by the larger community is an interesting question. But my point, my real point is that there are those of us who show up at this meeting responsibly every week and review these issues. And then there's the much larger network that we're all interested in. And I think it's a really good moment for the much larger network to actively or passively think about what the next Enable decade is going to be like.
Well said.
And we do have a chapters meeting coming up. And while we're going to be focusing on Europe, that's going to be, I think, the beginning of a focus on the globe. I think we will introduce these same issues of the next chapter leaders meeting. We'll talk about where they're at because in fact, our most sophisticated chapters to my knowledge are in Europe. Thailand comes to mind as an interesting other case. And they're a bit preoccupied right now, but I think I, I can see a, a trilogy of conversations. This one about Enable US. A next one about Enable in Europe and Europe as a shaper of current events. And a third one about Enable globally. And that would be actually a nice way of sort of trying to take stock of what, what has happened since day one, about 10 years ago.
I, I have to sign off here in a minute or two, but let me throw out a thought. Maybe a paid quote unquote international coordinator is something that this organization needs to morph to a little bit.
I was thinking the same thing. I mean, if we, we are sort of the central fundraising arm, at least for now, for the community in the sense that we are maintaining and managing the Enable fund, which is not being well utilized for projects. I do think it's time to think about maybe more than one potentially paid role that might be sort of based here in the US, but focused on facilitating the larger needs of the community beyond just making devices, some of the things that we've talked about here. We have the funds to do that. We're not finding volunteers to take on these roles that we've certainly been trying. I think that's the next thing to talk about.
Volunteering is great, but there are limitations.
Well, and that's what I wanted to say, just based on what John was saying. I I I just want to point out, John and I are not important as, you know, what we do is important, but we as, you know, cofound, okay, we were both there from the beginning, you know, but this community has always had a life of its own. It's it's done its thing, you know, without us. We've just been kind of there to help along the way. I don't think John and I are important, but somebody, I I think the idea of people like us that are plugged in really investing significant amounts of energy over a longer period of time and not just kind of the coming and going that sometimes happens. That is important and we are going to need to find more, whether they're volunteer or paid roles. I think paying people makes it a lot easier to establish that longer term, you know, role with with a community like this. So I think that's worth exploring.
Now, Alexander points out that, Bob, thanks. I assume. Well, okay, this is it. This is goodbye for today. And we'll see you.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I, my intention, just so you know, is, I mean, I'm not suddenly dropping all my activities and saying sayonara. But I've kind of said June 1st as the point at which I'd like to try to transfer over my duties to somebody else. And Jeremy, I do, I am in discussions with a potential replacement.
That's wonderful. And I I have to point this out. One more thing, guys. Not, I mean, Bob has been such a blessing for this organization. He's done so much for us, but you always, you always see, you can see so much about a person, not just in how they come in and how they work, but most importantly, perhaps, how they leave. Like Bob said, he's not just like, okay, I'm done, I'm out, you know. He's given me several months notice. He's helping me to find a replacement. I mean, this is, this is how you do it, guys.
We're not dropping a hot potato. But I also know unless you set the timeframe, it never happens. So, you know, that's my intention. And we'll work on it, but I really would, I I, and you know, let's not forget, there's another $25,000 this fall sitting out there. So somebody needs to go out after reminding our donors that that's there at the time. Now, perhaps I'm still around to do that, but but I am, for all intents and purposes, retiring. That doesn't mean I can't be reached and spoken with and always stay as friends to everybody. So.
Okay.
Okay, see you later.
That's ever much appreciated. See you soon.
Uh, let's see, just wanted to grab the, we had one for chapters. Where's, here it is.
So Alexander points out on the YouTube chat that any big organization with volunteers needs a paid person to be in charge and responsible for everything. So they can be all about that.
See, I don't disagree. And I think that's actually what we're seeing in some of these other large, successful chapters. Like I said, they're running themselves like an organization. I don't know a lot of the details, but I'll bet you that most of those chapters that are are doing such wonderful work have a board, they have assigned, you know, officers that oversee things and things like that. And when one of those people leaves, you know, there's a clear replacement, you know, and somebody else gets put in that role and there's that establishes some consistency and and I think that structure helps.
And Ben, your hand went up first.
I was gonna say, this is a a pretty interesting pivot point. And I, and I think this, I'm gonna see if I can set this up and pass it to John to to really dig in, but it involves sort of leveling up. So if you have these activities that are going on with volunteers and you have this sort of open source environment and ecosystem, you know, you you could have an organization that sets its sights on something specific and saying, we are going to cultivate the open source design catalog, we are going to manage sort of a fund pool, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. But that's, it's within this larger, more fluid community space. And and I feel like in the past, I mean, John, you can probably talk to this specifically, replacing one with the other is a collapse or was a collapse. So, you know, how can you step aside? And without creating a vacuum, have something that's sort of a reciprocal relationship that involves a traditional organization underneath a larger and respecting the larger ecosystem.
Right. And I I I was describing Alexander's comment, not necessarily endorsing the notion that it's time to become a traditional organization. As you have alluded, we did early on become a traditional organization. And it was an unsuccessful effort and it was actually strongly resisted by the community. Now, that may be because it was premature and now it may be that we are mature or even post mature. Or it may be because there is still a mismatch between the vision that we do of a network of semi-autonomous chapters versus not. So it's, it's a big, rich, deep and interesting question. And it's not, the answer is not clear to me. But I think the notion of an international coordinator or a paid servant CEO, if you will. And I put servant up front because I do think that responding to the needs of the community is is critical. Or possibly offering our funds to someone in one of these overseas chapters who would take on that role of international communicator, international coordinator are all interesting possibilities to consider.
We have a couple of examples to look at. You alluded to the Enable Community Foundation that we tried years back here in the US, which failed. And I think a lot of the reason behind that had to do with just the way it was presented. And it was sort of like, you know, this foundation was set up and all of a sudden it's like, we are enabled, we speak for enabled. So you go, people kind of rejected that. I think what we're talking about here is a better, uh, sort of similarly to the Enable Alliance, an organization that was established to support the enabled community. Trying to change it, not trying to say we, you know, own you or anything like that. But we're here to provide some structure that will help, you know, to support that organization. Now, they've kind of, you know, done their own things for the most part. And other than our conferences, we haven't had as much collaboration with them as I would have liked, but I think as a model, that's kind of what I I think Alexander and Ben are alluding to here, that there's the possibility of setting up an actual organization that's run like an organization that's not trying to be in charge, but is there to do certain things for the community, whether it's R and D or helping with infrastructure, or, you know, the other things that we've talked about. But that 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 group, that entity that's taking those responsibilities might be run more like a traditional organization without trying to claim ownership of anything beyond that.
Yeah, that's a great point. And thinking about it in terms of scale, you know, if you've got this, recognizing that what we're talking about is primarily US activities, recognizing that those other parts of the world that are a couple of steps ahead of us that have already figured out how to network nationally in some ways. So it's trying to figure out locally what what we can do on this scale. But also we've got all these chapters even here that's set up as traditional organizations. So it's having, having a chapter that doesn't need to just print hands and send them out, but is supporting you know, in the same way that we've been setting up these these regular meetings, inviting people from the larger community. Having said that, though, I mean, I wonder those other models like Turkey and France are still primarily focused on production and and sort of those national cases. So this would be significantly different. I mean, even as going through the the chapter status, you know, what we're talking about would be sort of a different path and and an important path.
It's interesting. It kind of fits in with, I think it was last week, we talked about that and we actually modified the language of the evidence required for chapters and maybe it would need some further modification, but you know, I think at the time I made the point that it should be just, you know, show us that you're contributing in some meaningful way to supporting our community. That doesn't necessarily mean making devices and maybe this is more an opportunity to further that discussion. But I think we probably, oh, we have a question in the chat. Why in Brazil does the organization seem totally inoperative? Well, that's interesting. We haven't heard from our friends in Brazil for a while. Do either of you know anything about what's going on?
No, but I would ask Everton, I am not under the impression that it's inoperative. I think they have one of the most mature collaborations with a government healthcare system of any enabled chapter in the world. So.
Definitely reach out to Everton lens and contact information is on our chapters map. If you haven't already been there through the hub, just go to that Brazil chapter, click on it, you'll get the contact details, email address. I would reach out to Everton. But yeah, I I agree. They they're probably just absorbed in their work. I'm not aware of them changing anything significantly. But I was gonna say, that's probably a good point to wrap things up for today. There's a lot more to discuss. Final thought from Alexander, a chapter nursery or cedar, that idea of having the hub rebranded as the major US chapter really clicks with me. So leading or helping the larger community is through joint efforts and consortiums. Okay, so it's just along the same lines of what we were discussing. So this is obviously a discussion that we are going to need to continue. But I'm going to suggest that we wrap things up here. John, you get the final word.
Final word. So I think this is a good discussion. I propose to send a link to this video of this discussion to all of the chapter leaders to set the stage for the next chapter leaders meeting, which will focus on Europe, both because I think we can count on them being there and because it's an acute issue. But then to set the stage with a larger discussion as well, because I think we, I think we've sort of profiled ourselves and our situation quite well in this conversation. And I want to make sure that whatever we do do, it serves the needs of, and this is tricky, our American constituents and the international community. It seems to me we can't walk away from either group. So we have to figure out how to position ourselves.
Ben, is that something that you could help us with drafting an email with the chapter leaders and sending a link to this?
Yeah, I can work with John on that because that I can pull the list together. John, if you want to draft some language to that. As the community leader for that, that'd be good.
Okay. I have to go too.
Sounds good. So we are not doing the focus workshop today, right, Ben?
Um, it looks like Alexander wants to meet after this call.
Got it. Okay. I will let you meet with him and I'll look to the hub for an update then.
Okay. And and Alexander, I'll send you a a link, I'll email you a link. And is there anybody else that I should include? I mean, I can include an invitation to John and Jeremy, but I assume that you guys have other stuff going on. So.
I am going to need to take care of some other things right now.
Okay, no problem.
Thanks, all.